U.S. Senate Club was the first club that I joined when I came to District 36. I decided to join Friday, September 7th, 2001. I'll let that pause and sink in your brain for a few moments because we know what happened that following Tuesday, September 11th. So my history with the club is long. It's been a delight to be here. I've learned a little bit about what it means to work on the Hill. I do not. But I am so glad, as Carol said, that we have lasted 50 years. And I can tell more about the history of women and Toastmasters, et cetera, but I'm not going to say that right now. I'll return control of the meeting to Carol.
Thank you so much, Bonnie. Thanks for holding the club together this last 12 years or so. And also, I wanted to acknowledge John O'Jefo, who is our Division A Director and put together our contests and has really helped our club and all the clubs in Division A. John, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Toastmaster of the Day, fellow Toastmasters, and honored guests. I'm John O'Jefo, and it's a pleasure to be with you this morning to celebrate 50 years. Wow, golden age. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be with you, and I look forward to continue to work with you even after my term. Back to you, Carol.
Wonderful. Thank you, John. Thanks so much. And it was wonderful seeing you at the district conference, where I hurt my knees dancing so much. It was a lot of fun. So now there's some things that happen in a typical Toastmasters meeting. And one of them we have is the Word of the Day. It's my pleasure to call on Devaki Davae. Devaki is a former teacher, a former state staffer for Senator in Las Vegas. She is a fellow in my office with the Asian Pacific American Institute for Congressional Studies APAC. She's one of the most enthusiastic members I have ever worked with, and she has a dog named Nacho who she adores. Devaki, can you please give us the Word of the Day?
Yes, thank you so much, Toast Leader. The Word of the Day is willowy. The definition, well, two definitions, one being bordered, shaded, or covered by willows, trees, and the second as relating to a person tall, slim, and lithe. Using this in an example, my sisters, my sisters, willowy, oops, that's a tongue twister. Apologies. My sisters' willowy countenance can be observed in our family portrait above the fireplace. And I will be counting how many times folks use the Word of the Day. Back to you, Toast Leader.
Thank you very much, Devaki, for sharing the word "willowy" with us. One of the reasons we do the Word of the Day is to increase our spontaneous speaking ability, to find a way that we can pull a word into our conversation as we're answering questions or giving feedback. The other thing we regularly do at a Toastmasters meeting is we have a grammarian. Today's grammarian is a longtime member of our club, more than three years. Patrick Baranowski, he is a defense contractor, he works for a defense contractor in government relations and international business development with a focus on Indo-Pacific region. His path is strategic relationships. And this year, he earned a completed Level 2 for us in our goal to hit the select distinguished club. He's recently married, and he values Toastmasters as a welcoming organization to build his leadership skills. Today's grammarian, Patrick Baranowski.
Thanks so much, Toast Leader Carol. I'll be serving as the grammarian today, and what I'll be monitoring is proper use of grammar among the speakers and also monitoring whether speakers are relying on crutch words like "like." So, and the reason we do this, as Carol alluded to, is so that speakers can understand if perhaps they're relying on those crutch words, and they can monitor over time to try and weed those out of their speaking to become a more powerful and confident speaker. And with that, I'll give it back to Carol, our Toast Leader of the Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Patrick. And at the end of the meeting, Auburn, who is serving as our general evaluator, will be calling on Patrick and on Devaki for their reports. So make sure you stay tuned for that. Now, there's other things that happen at a Toastmaster meeting we're not going to do today. So we're not going to time speeches, we're not going to ask spontaneous questions, which are speeches, which we call table topics, and we're not going to evaluate speeches, but we are going to hear an amazing speech from our guest speaker, all the way from California, Addison Bowe. Now, I first met Addison when he was a congressional liaison with the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. And the CFPB is a very important agency, and he would come and sort of hang out and talk to us about all the questions we had about this new agency. And at that time, Jackie and I both worked for members on House Financial Services, and we had a lot of questions about what was happening, what they were going to do. And he just was great. He answered all our questions. He had quite a vision for where we were confused on things, and we really, as Hill staff, rely on congressional liaisons. But Addison had a whole separate side I had no idea about. He was an amazing storyteller. And he once invited me to, I believe it was a Moth event, but it could have been a TED Talk or something else. It was years ago, I forgot. But he was talking about his experience working for Representative Gabrielle Giffords and his connection with Gabe Zimmerman. And I just remember feeling like this is the most amazing speech I've heard. It was so honest, so memorable, it had such insights. And I just thought, I want to hear more of Addison's speeches. And I think like some of you on the, on the call today, I became kind of a groupie, and whenever he would speak, I would try to go see it. And so I was thrilled when he agreed to wake up early, he's now in California, and be our first speaker in our 50-year guest speaker series at U.S. Senate Toastmasters. So please help me welcome Addison Bowe.
Thank you so much. My neighbors have decided to do landscaping today. So can you hear the lawnmower? Or is it perfect? Okay, great. Well, first, I just want to say what an honor it is to be here with all of you. I deeply appreciate the invitation. And thank you so much, of course, to the U.S. Senate Toastmasters Club and President Betsy Carswell, and of course, Senate staffer Carol Wayman, and all of you for making this moment possible. There is a kind of cynical saying that I heard when I moved to Washington, which speaks to the influence of the political climate on interpersonal relationships, which is if you want a friend in Washington, get a pet. And if you want two friends, get two pets. And I am certain that whoever said that had never met Carol and Betsy because I felt so fortunate to connect with two such lovely, sincere, good souls who, who really tried to connect meaningfully with anyone that you came into contact with. And it was just such a welcomed experience. So, so I appreciate having known you then. I appreciate this invitation now. And especially, I feel honored to, to help your club celebrate 50 years. That's a really incredible and tremendous accomplishment. And thank you for making senators and congressional staff better speakers. We, we certainly all need more better speakers in our lives and certainly in Congress. So, well done. In terms of what I'm going to talk about, working for Congresswoman Gabrielle Giffords, it will forever be one of the greatest honors and best experiences of my life, while the January 8th, 2011 mass shooting will forever be one of the most devastating. And I can tell you, I asked for your generosity, your grace, and your patience because it's not an easy topic. Even talking about the joys are inseparable from feeling the loss. So it's emotional, and I don't know always what exactly will happen or how exactly it will surface. Sometimes tears, sometimes needing to pause, sometimes just letting myself shake a little bit because time, for me, hasn't made it easier. In some ways, time has made it more difficult. I don't know why. Grief is mysterious. That's my only, the only answer that I can offer. But when experiencing, anyone who's experienced something so sudden or tragic, time becomes, you know, at once organized into three parts. Everything that happened before that moment, that moment, and then everything that happened after that moment. And that's certainly true for how my mind has wrapped itself around my experience working for the Congresswoman with the megawatt smile. So I'm going to cruise through those three parts, and we'll probably go slightly longer. That's okay. So just starting with before the shooting. So after, after changing her party affiliation, which some people don't know, from Republican to Democrat, Gabrielle Giffords, who is a third-generation Arizonan, began her public life in 2001 as a member of the House in the Arizona State Legislature. Couple years later, in 2003, she was the youngest woman to serve in the Arizona State Senate. She was passionate about children and education, and one of the big ideas that she championed was high-quality all-day kindergarten. For some reason, I remember one day I was running errands across town in my truck, and I heard on the radio that longtime Republican and openly gay Congressman Jim Colby had announced he wouldn't seek a 12th term. And radio pundits were discussing likely prospects for replacing him, which was the first time I heard the name Gabrielle Giffords. Now, I listen to radio pundits all the time. This is the only thing I ever remember about having listened to the radio. I heard her name for the first time. She would, of course, go on to win the seat and became the third woman and the first Jewish person to represent Arizona in the U.S. House of Representatives. She started serving in January of 2007. Now, there's some of us, some people who are, who are joining us today or who will watch this who haven't been campaign staffers or congressional staffers and who may not know, like lots of folks, that members of Congress have several offices. One, of course, is in Washington where policies are discussed, legislation's written, and it's obviously near where votes are taken. And then there are district offices in the member's state. So district offices are responsible for representing the member on a day-to-day basis within the district, convening stakeholders, organizing and participating in outreach events, and responding to the most immediate concerns of constituents. At the time, Congresswoman Giffords represented Arizona's 8th congressional district, which is largely now Arizona's 2nd congressional district, and it included, includes more than 700,000 people, all of whom were always encouraged and welcomed to contact the district offices for help with any issues they were having that involved federal agencies or the federal government. The Congresswoman had two district offices, one in Sierra Vista and one in Tucson, where six to eight constituent services staff, which is about 100,000 constituents per staffer, and a team of very talented college interns who were essential to our work, did the work of constituent services. Now, in terms of how I ended up, how I got lucky enough and was fortunate enough to end up on this team, someone I previously worked with, someone who is profoundly gifted as a social worker and who's a beautiful human being, Patty Valera, worked for Congress, worked for the Congresswoman in constituent services. Her specialty was helping veterans navigate challenges with the VA. And she had unbeknownst to me offered my name up as someone who might be a good fit for the office. I'd previously been the lead researcher of a regional think tank and had spent several years studying the impact of predatory mortgage lending and payday lending on low-to-moderate-income families. But I had gotten my heart broken in the process. Like, I remember learning about a state legislator and how his home loan was suddenly forgiven by his lender days ahead of a big vote on consumer-friendly legislation. I did not yet have a strong enough stomach to simultaneously witness dire human need and the political corruption that created or exacerbated those needs. Just, it was too up close for me. So I, I turned from public policy to work and follow another big passion, which was child and family counseling psychology. So I was preparing to start grad school to become a child and family therapist when I got a call from Joni Jones, the epically kind office manager at Congresswoman Giffords' office. She was wondering if I might be interested in coming in for an interview. The truth was, I wasn't, but I didn't tell her that. In my mind, I was thinking, oh, no, I'm not doing that again. I, I've made my decision. No more caring and hoping that politicians can be actual agents of change. My mind is made up. I'm going to be a therapist, and that is the end of it. But Joni was so nice on the phone, and I was such a sucker. So what actually came out of my mouth was, sure, Joni, I'd love to. So I went to the office and met Joni, who is truly one of the kindest, sweetest, and funniest human beings on the face of the planet. And I met District Director Ron Barber, who had dedicated more than 30 years of his professional life to helping developmentally disabled adults achieve maximum levels of independence. And I met, and this is where it gets hard. And I met Gabriel, Gabe Zimmerman, the constituent services director, who would later become the outreach director. Gabe was a very willowy, smiley, sincere social worker. Sitting down with three of the loveliest, heart of gold, public servants, my little bitter heart lit up. I immediately recognized the palpable goodness of them and what that very likely meant about the woman who inspired and hired them. All my resolve to leave politics melted. I was, I was a goner. The three of them, their combined presence completely hijacked my lost hope and my heart. The rest is literally history. I ended up doing both. I was in grad school full-time to become a therapist, and I joined Congresswoman Giffords' team in 2008 at the height of the financial crisis and the housing crash. As a constituent services staffer, I was responsible for handling a portfolio of casework, everyone who called in in dire financial need, people facing job loss, foreclosure, debilitating debt, student loan debt. I spent most of my time preventing banks and servicers from unethically or unlawfully foreclosing on people's homes. I approached constituent services like it was the Helping People Olympics because I love helping people, and I'm, I'm also a little competitive. I wanted to be the best that I could be at helping people. I wanted to be the Simone Biles of my realm. And I am honored to report that the Congresswoman, my colleagues, and the interns truly made it possible for me to become my best in service to others. And I can only hope that I help them become their best, too. I can tell you that me becoming my best, it was a steep learning curve of learning to become patient, cooler-tempered, and and more willing to appease folks who I didn't feel I should have to appease in order to get things done for constituents. I didn't have the, I, I no longer had the benefit or luxury or self-satisfaction of my ego when it came to needing to be sure that someone had a roof over their head, that their kids didn't need to change schools because they were being unlawfully foreclosed on. So I, I had to become better because Congresswoman Giffords' office, it was no longer about any of us individually. It was about how could we help? So during my time on staff from 2008 to 2012, I worked on more than 2,600 constituent cases, which House leadership informed me was more cases than any caseworker had completed in a similar timeframe in the history of Congress. In fact, our whole constituent services team was high-achieving in this way. We became known as the best constituent services team in the country. We each successfully completed more cases in a year than many congressional offices completed in their lifetimes of service. We all earned individual and team gold medals in the Helping People Olympics, which I'm sharing with you for two reasons. One is simply for the enjoyment of reveling, or some might say bragging. We were so good at helping people, and it was so much fun and so satisfying to help restore people's faith in humanity and in their government. But the bigger reason I'm sharing this with you is because I want you to know how all the magic happened because it is replicable. First of all, Congresswoman Giffords made it very clear that she wanted us to be the best constituent services shop we could be. She set a very high bar. The whole vibe of the office was that, was that we were expected to do everything we possibly could to help people. That's why she hired Gabe to lead the shop. He was a deeply compassionate and hard-working person. He was not a "get it off my desk" guy. When it came to helping people, Gabe was very much a "put as much as humanly possible on his desk" kind of guy. When Mr. Rogers said, "Look for the helpers," I swear he must have met Gabe. That's who Gabe was. He was a helper. He was a helper you might not even, you might not even be able to believe could exist until you found him or until he found you. His example was the, his example was the leadership that set our standard. When constituents called us, it wasn't a question of whether we could help. It was, how can we help as much as possible? Now, most people never think to call their congressional office to do anything other than complain, which is a perfectly valid reason to call your congressional office. Few, though, really expect their congressional office to be helpful. Whereas our office became so well-known for being so reliably and prolifically good at helping people, I swear, people started calling us to be like, hey, can you help me open this jar? Because I, I once got a call, can you help me administer B12 shots to my alpacas? And it tells you something that my immediate reaction was to Google, how do I stick a needle in an alpaca? Now, the next thing I want to say about our work in the time before the shooting was that our office broke major ground on something really substantial that set the standard for congressional offices nationwide. It has to do with my portfolio of casework. Unlike other portfolios that were tied more directly to a federal agency, things like veterans' issues or social security issues, mine was related to the financial crisis. It involved banks, financial institutions, lenders, loan servicers. Now, the primary, primary vehicle that congressional offices typically use is to send a template letter signed by the member of Congress on behalf of the constituent to whatever federal agency is involved to initiate the case, which is called a congressional inquiry. Then to make follow-up calls to keep things moving and to get answers. So a typical case from, say, Patty's caseload was a veteran calling to say they were completely disabled from their Gulf War service. They could not work. But the VA had only granted them 10% or 20% disability status, which was not enough money for them to live on, and as a result, many times, they were facing homelessness. So Patty would learn everything about the person's medical condition and their associated psychological issues that were disabling the veteran, and she would send off the template letter to initiate the inquiry, then make follow-up calls with the information she had to try to talk through the case, to persuade the VA, or to find out what documentation was needed to present to them that would, that would allow them to help the veteran. So with my casework, as I became increasingly overwhelmed with calls from truly terrified and sometimes suicidal homeowners, people who'd lost their jobs, had gotten sick and couldn't work, people trying to modify their loans but hadn't heard from the bank, I was faced with a dilemma of how to help them. At the time, there was no Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. There was no single federal agency responsible for holding banks and servicers accountable when it came to consumer loans. I, I would write to the closest fit, the Office of the Comptroller of the Currency, but I learned that doing so was not materially or substantively helpful. By the time they could respond in three to five months to say there was nothing they could do, people had already long lost their homes. The OCC couldn't force a private company to do anything for particular homeowners. What I wanted to do was to write to and to call financial institutions directly, but that had never been done before. Congressional offices had never sent congressional inquiries to private companies before, at least certainly not behalf on everyday constituents because Congress doesn't have the same kind of jurisdiction over companies or federal, as federal agencies, and because of the potential of abuse of power that could happen if members of Congress suddenly started contacting banks to seemingly or actually ask for special favors on behalf of constituents. But the mortgage, the mortgage crisis in Arizona was too bad. It was devastating. To not do anything about it, we were among the five hardest-hit states. So I went to Gabe and I asked him for two things. One was to allow me to write to and to call financial institutions directly. I was well aware that I would need to take great care to do so ethically, but I was confident that I could skillfully walk that line. And in any event, we had to do something different if we were going to be able to help people keep their homes. The second thing I asked for was his, Ron's, and the Congresswoman's trust. Typically, we sent a congressional inquiry that was a very templatized letter that would fill in the constituent's name, a general, a general description, couple words of the issue, and, and then send it off. The federal agency would then, we'd include an attachment, which was in the constituent's words, the issue in the constituent's words. And the federal agency would then respond to the issue as the constituent represented it. And what I wanted to be able to do was to retell the constituent's story in a more compelling, clear, and persuasive way based on our understanding of what agencies need to hear in order to do their jobs. So I asked to be able to craft each letter individually and to be able to really tell the story of constituents to financial institutions so that they could do something about it. But very specifically, if I was going to do it that way, I needed to be able to do it without anyone reviewing or approving those letters because that would take too long. I just needed them to trust me to write the letters appropriately and to send them off under the signature of the Congresswoman. So this was a big ask. Gabe took my request to Gabby, to Ron, and this is why I was able to help people because they agreed, they, they trusted the people that they hired. So after experiencing incredible success through this approach of contacting banks directly and telling consumers stories to banks directly, we inspired congressional offices across the country to follow suit, and it became standard practice. So for the first time, congressional offices were directly holding financial institutions accountable through making homes affordable and telling constituent stories. So that was, that was life before the shooting. And it's easier to talk about, and it feels wonderful to talk about. So I talked about that part longer. So for just a shorter amount of time, I'm going to talk about the shooting and the aftermath. So January 8th was a Saturday morning. Gabe had organized the Congress on Your Corner event, which was a regular event for our office. We would set up shop in front of a grocery store, in this case, a Safeway, and let people know that the Congresswoman would be available for a couple hours to hear whatever constituents had to say. People lined up, got a chance to talk to her one-on-one. constituents had to say. People lined up, got a chance to talk to her one on one. I had helped, you know, staff every Congress on Your Corner that we had hosted since I had started working there. Uh, the day before the event, I would always ask Gabe, what time would you need me the next morning? And he always had the same answers, roughly eight or eight thirty. But January seventh, this, this Congress on Your Corner was the only time he ever gave me a different answer. He, uh, at four fifty nine PM, for some reason, I remember with the time on the clock, he, on Friday, he said, you know, I don't think we need you. And I was so surprised and a little thrilled to maybe not have to work on a Saturday, so I said, really? And he said, yeah, I think we've got it covered. And I said to him, wow, this must be my lucky day. And he looked at me and said, yes, it is. And those were the last words that we ever spoke to one another. The following morning, a gunman seeking to assassinate the Congresswoman opened fired on the crowd that had formed a little after ten AM, and in just a few seconds, he killed and forever devastated the families of Christina Taylor Green, who was a nine year old. Dorothy Dot Morris. She was seventy six, a retired secretary from Oro Valley. And she was the wife of George, who was wounded that day. Judge John Roll, the chief judge of, uh, US District Court for Arizona. Phyllis Snack, she was seventy nine, a proud homemaker from Tucson. Dorwin Stoddard, he was seventy six, a retired construction worker. His wife, Mabye, was there and also wounded. And then, of course, Gabe Zimmerman. Who was thirty years old. The day of the shooting, he and his fiancee Kelly were planning to check out a venue where they were going to get married. And that obviously never happened. So he wounded thirteen others. He would have killed and wounded more, but as he was trying to reload his weapon, some really brave older members of the community tackled him to stop his rampage. Among the wounded was Ron Barber. Our district director was shot in the cheek. Another bullet blew out his femoral vein, but only nicked his femoral artery, otherwise he would have died. Our community outreach director, Pam Simon, who'd been a dedicated teacher all of her life, was shot in the chest. And of course, the Congresswoman was shot at point blank range in the head. The gunman wounded countless others through the trauma people were forced to experience witnessing such bloodshed, and he broke the heart of Tussanans and people around the country and around the world who believed we should be able to be safe going to the grocery store or going to school. As for the impact on me, I, I don't have a name for the loss I experienced. I just don't even know what to call it. I received a call that morning moments after the shooting happened. It was my dear friend, Paty Valera. She said, are you alone? Yes. She said, I need you to sit down. Okay. She said, I need you to take a deep breath. Okay. And then she said, Sarah just calls from Congress on Your Corner. She said everyone's been shot. Sarah Hummelreka was a constituent services staffer and our photographer who was at the event. Pati and I agreed I'd come and pick her up, and we would drive to the Safeway to try and see what was going on and to comfort our colleagues. We arrived as the last ambulances were leaving. While those who had died on the scene were left there on the pavement. They were covered in white butcher's claws that someone had taken from the meat department to cover the bodies. And that's when we knew that Gabe had died. An image, among the many images that has stayed with me that day, is the blood spattered on the American flag that we brought with us that Gabby stood next to when she met with constituents. Another image is when I drove to the hospital where Gabby was in surgery and our team was gathering. As I was pulling in, I saw Emily Nottingham, Gabe's mother, pulling out of the hospital parking lot. And I looked through the windshield at her. I saw that Kelly O'Brien was in the front seat, the love of Gabe's life, his fiancee. I remember her face. She was crying, utterly destroyed. I knew that she must have just found out that Gabe had died. And I remember Emily's face, calm, focused, in that moment, the face of a mother. But in that moment, the face of a mother taking care of Kelly. She was so together and strong, driving Kelly home. I'm sorry that I have to, or that I am sharing with you such gruesome and painful moments, and now is not the time to be able to look away from those moments, because they are still reality ten years later. And will continue to be a reality for other communities and other families until, until members of Congress substantively do something. So in terms of, uh, after the shooting, what I want to say about that in terms of how our office was able to make it through the experience as well as we did, there is someone who I want to name and call attention to, and that is Joni Jones. So Joni was our office manager. But Joni, Joni was, Joni was so much more. Joni made sure that throughout all the time of all this work that we did before the shooting, during, after, she made sure that we celebrated. She made sure that we spent time together. She made sure that we had fun together. She con- she constantly convened us, she and her husband Gary constantly convened all of us, the team, at her house for everyone's birthday, for every holiday. Sometimes for no reason but to just be together. And her presence in the office of being kind and making sure that we spent time together built such strong, in addition to all the meaningful work we were doing, it, it helped to build such strong bonds between us. So that by the times the shooting happened, we, we had a habit of coming together and supporting each other and knowing each other and laughing together and being together. So Joni and her role in that, and Gary's role in that too, with the benefit of retrospection, is one of the things I credit most for how well we were able to manage something so truly terrible as a team. And how our team was then able to care for the community, because we were such a strong bonded team. So I love Joni for that, and I'll forever be grateful, and I've taken it as a great lesson of the importance of building it into how a team functions, making time to celebrate, to be together. One of the most significant things that happened on the weekend that the shooting occurred was to decide when or if we were going to open up the office on Monday. Keeping in mind that our boss had been shot in the head, our district director was in the hospital with serious injuries, our community outreach director was dead, our community outreach coordinator was in the hospital and recovering. So we were literally down members, you know, of our staff. And so the staff came together and had a meeting to decide how folks wanted to handle opening up the office. I actually wasn't in the meeting. I was responsible for showing, letting the FBI into our office to take Gabe's computer, because we didn't know much about the shooter at the time, so we were trying to figure out if there had been any prior contact. So I, that was part of my, the very strange, surreal asundery of tasks that I had taken on, uh, in this, throughout this experience. But what I, but I completely trusted the team. So whatever they decided, I would, I would just do whatever they wanted to do. And what the team really powerfully decided, which was a really difficult decision, was to open the office on Monday morning. Now, the difference between our office doing that and and a different kind of office is that we're the federal government, we're a Congresswoman's office. Our job is to help people, to represent folks, to do the work of democracy, which never stops. And and as public servants, we committed to that, and that means sometimes having to really, to bear dif- difficult experiences in order to keep doing it, and that was the case. So that's what our office decided. That this was, that obviously we should have time off to heal and deal and, but in this case, the, what we were going to do is step up to the responsibility, we had to continue doing the work of democracy and to take care of the community who very much needed care at this time. And they were going to come to our office for that care, and we wanted to be sure that our doors were open to provide it. Regardless of how personally painful that was for each individual. That is ultimately the decision that the office collectively made to open up, to open up the office on Monday, at the same time, we always did eight o'clock. So uh, we did. And you know, history, I feel like just, we don't have a choice sometimes in what is our work to do. We, I, 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 I tried to resist working in public policy and caring and being in politics again, but that's not what was meant to happen. It just so happened that I was the person who opened, I, I, one of the memories that will stick with me forever is when I, it was my responsibility to help coordinate with the police department's security for the office, for us to open it safely and to organize the interns to arrive early to be able to set up the office, to receive people that we knew would come pouring in. And so I had to open up the office to make it available to the interns so we could set up. And I'll just never remember the feeling and the sound and the stillness of putting the key in the lock that morning and opening the office. And there were two interns that arrived were so eager to help. They arrived before I did, and they were waiting. They were waiting to be there, to be helpful. They weren't even interns anymore. They were past interns that showed up to be helpful. Because that's how amazing they are. And I just remember opening, uh, opening the office, and so that's what we did. And literally thousands of Arizonans poured in, and we hugged and we held them. And, um, the last thing I'll say is that day, there was a man sitting in a chair in our lobby. And he was just sitting there and he had a cane, and we figured people needed time to just sit and cry. So we didn't bother anyone. But after a long time went by, we finally went up to the guy and said, is there anything we could do? Is there anything he needed? And he told us that he had a meeting that day scheduled with Gabe. And the meeting, he had scheduled a meeting with Gabe to thank Gabe. He had HIV. And he did not know how he was going to afford the medication he needed to manage his HIV. This technically was not an issue that we would have been able to solve. I didn't even know Gabe was working on it. He, he didn't tell anyone he was working on it. But he solved the issue. And he got the guy access to affordable medication. So the guy was coming in to thank Gabe for what he described as saving his life. So that's, that's the power of public service. Thanks for the opportunity to share, to go over time and to, to listen.
Addison, thank you so so much for talking about the work that congressional staff do. We're never in the frame, we're always behind the, the picture, and and I know we, all of us, people don't know what we do and they're interested in what we're doing, and you've always been just such a top notch public servant. So appreciate you explaining what you did and all the great work that Congresswoman Gifford's. That my, my only time meeting Congresswoman Gifford's, I was in the members only elevator during a vote, which is a big no-no. You should, if you're a staff, you should not be in a members only elevator, but I was rushing to something and she got in the elevator. And you're right, that smile, just, it, it just felt like I was bathed by light. Because instead of saying, what are you doing? Get out of here. I'm going to turn you over to your member, which some members do. She said, what are you here for? What are you working on? She was just so warm and effusive, and it was just, she was beautiful. And I, I remember that moment of like, she's an amazing woman.
She is.
Long after that, that the horror happened that you spoke about. Um, so to everybody on, you and everybody on this call who worked with, worked with that office, you know, we stand with you in your grief, and, and I wish we all didn't have to keep living these horrors every, every few days, it seems. I, I, I know you've been very kind to agree to a couple of questions. So I want to turn it over to Christina Willis, who is our, one of our members for three years. She is in the engaging with humor path, uh, completed her level three. She's also a published author. Uh, sustainable networking for scientists and engineers, and there's a wonderful talk that we have on our, our website, at our Facebook page, where you can learn more about her. And she is going to lead our Q and A. Christina?
Thank you so much, Carol, and thanks again, Addison, for that just incredible speech, really deeply moving and beautiful imagery, as well as very intense emotional content. So I, I have the privilege of moderating questions today for Addison. So who would like to kick us off with questions? Sebiki, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, one of the questions I had that, um, again, Addison definitely partially covered, um, in mentioning why, uh, you chose to go into public service. A lot of it had to do with the leader and the team, the people just really resonated with you. Um, have you ever, in your time working in, in public service, um, felt a disconnect between yourself and your office's values or the values of the leader of your office, and, and how did you deal with that?
I love that you have asked this question. Because I actually almost didn't get the job at Congresswoman Gifford's office, funny enough. At first, I didn't want it. Then after I met them, I did. And then I almost didn't get it because of this question you've asked. In my previous, I had a little bit of a reputation. Which I think I might even still have, to be perfectly honest, which from my prior life, uh, or from my prior work in public policy within the organization that I worked in, I was known for speaking up if I thought that we were deviating in any way from what our, our principles were and our stated purpose was. And I would never go outside, you know, of the organization, but I would be willing to speak up within to say, to a- at least speak my conscience to say, could, is there, oh, oh, could we thread the needle a little more precisely? Is there anything we could do to be more in alignment? Because admittedly, I don't have a high tolerance for if we say we are about this, about fairness and about, then, then that's what I look as, like, then we better be about fairness. And so if I perceive that we're not, then, then I will say something. I, behind me are my ancestors. I come from some stocky stubborn Polish and Russian Catholics and Jews. some stocky stubborn Polish and Russian Catholics and Jews who were factory workers and coal miners and farmers and union presidents and leaders. I'd come from people who spoke up. So so one of the things Congresswoman Gifford's office want to make sure was what exactly would that mean in the context of a congressional office, which is a much more sort of delicate environment where you need to really be able to trust your staff that if they do feel that way, they will handle it really internally discreetly and it's, you know, fully trustworthy. So I love this question because yeah, that's a challenge of any whenever I I don't think we'll ever agree a hundred percent with anyone we're working for. Sometimes I don't even agree with myself entirely and I change my mind. But in the case of Congresswoman Gifford's office, I could work with someone who was perfectly aligned with every single thing I believed in, but who also wasn't good to people, which I had opportunities to do that. But Congresswoman Giffords was the most important values to me are being good to people. And she was good to people. She was good to her staff. She was good to Carol Wayman in the elevator. She's good to everyone she encountered, whether they liked her or disagreed with her or not. And that's the value that was so easy to align with that that made it that helped me in times when there was disagreement. So yes, the answer is there were moments when there were words used, for example, to describe how we should handle immigration on the border that were certainly appreciated by people in certain towns on the border that that was the right way to talk to them about it. But I had a hard time with those words myself. You know, so yeah, it certainly happened. And I loved working for her and it was, it's one of the greatest honors of my life. I love her.
Thank you so much for sharing and and also, I I think as someone who has worked for other leaders, I completely agree that it's always a balancing act and it's really important to choose who you work for. And to, you know, know that even if you may not see eye to eye, you you still fundamentally have other values you share with with your leader.
Yes. I will also say we were a swing district. So our district, Congresswoman Giffords was a Democrat, but our district actually, I think, was like plus one percent registered Republicans. So that is also a very different dynamic of how to how to how I'm sure she wrestled with how to be really authentic around what she thought and believed and how to be able to translate that in a way that a lot of people could really understand, you know. So sometimes it's just a matter of language, but.
Thank you so much, Deviki, for that great question and Addison for the interesting answer. I think we're getting pretty close to the end, so we'll wrap up Q and A and I'll pass back to Carol.
Thank you so much, Christina. And thank you, Addison and Deviki. I'm going to turn it over to our meeting general evaluator, our longtime member Auburn Mann, who is a sports enthusiast. Auburn, can you lead the evaluation?
Thank you, Carol. First, I would like to call up Patrick for his grammarian report.
Thank you, Auburn, for my grammarian report. Betsy, I didn't catch any crutch words or misstatements from you. Carol, I caught two ums and one so. Bonnie, I did not catch anything. Deviki, I caught six ums, one uh and one you know. Christina, I did not catch anything as you moderated the Q and A. Addison, I caught one um, nine uhs, one like, six uses of so and two you knows. I think that's really impressive though, for the length of time in which you spoke. Very job job well done, very good job. For myself, I caught one like, maybe I'm undercounting because I've I've got an advantage here. And back to Auburn.
Thank you, Patrick. And are we going to
Deviki has word of the day.
Yeah. Deviki, were you able to sort of keep track of?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. I know we had a special meeting today and I believe the word of the day was used by Addison. It was wonderful to hear at the beginning of your speech. And I believe it was used one other time, but I did not write down by whom. I believe it was someone who spoke just before I did.
Thank you, Deviki. And thank you, Patrick and Deviki for just, you know, volunteering to keep track of everyone's, you know, word usage and I guess speaking choices. But I don't from firsthand experience, that's a that's an interesting play. And I guess, yeah, thank you, everyone for this, you know, for just, you know, coming to our 50th anniversary celebration. First of all, I want to again recognize Bonnie, our longest active member just for, you know, being supportive and playing the role of Zoom host and making sure everything is, you know, runs smoothly from a technical standpoint. Obviously, what I thank Betsy and Jackie for their very warm and thorough welcomes to everyone today. And I obviously want to thank Addison. Thank you for your powerful testimony. And I I feel like you, your story and experience as a public servant, let alone a Toastmaster, really embodies our missionary, the US Senate Club. And I think you were just a phenomenal headliner for our 50th anniversary celebration. And, you know, I thank Christina for moderating the Q and A, volunteer for that role. And I think that, I guess, on behalf of the US Senate Club, thank everyone, you know, for supporting us today. From guests to longtime members to new members, District Thirty Six dignitaries and everyone, we really appreciate your support and presence here today. And feel free to join us again as we continue to rise for fifty more years. Back to you, Carol.
Thank you so much, Auburn, for serving as a general evaluator. I have been reading a lot about how do we strengthen our democracy? And one way is contact theory, getting to know other people, hearing their stories. It reduces prejudice, it builds empathy. And that's what we do at US Senate Toastmasters is we give people a chance to describe what's happened to you. What have you learned? How have you grown? And we've been doing it for fifty years. So I'm going to leave you with Ted Lasso's advice to be curious, not judgmental. And come back to our next meeting on June 10th. As we continue our celebration, our next big guest speaker after Addison, who clearly has given us enough to remember and think about for years to come will be Michael Franklin, who is the founder of Speech Writers of Color, and that'll be July twenty second. Thank you, everybody for coming. I'm going to gavel this out. And if you'd like to stay and ask questions of the club or you'd like to information about joining. If not, we'll see you June 10th. Addison, thank you again so much for speaking with us.
Thank you.